Go ahead and jump right in. So it's great to see everyone. I like to call this meeting to order. This is the Land Realization Adorting Board of Commissioners meeting. So I assume everybody's in the right place here this morning. So good morning again. First, on our agenda, we have called the meeting order, we have elections, elections of officers. I will note that one of our commissioners, Commissioner Vile, is unable to make it today and is out. And so it's the two of us this morning. So we're going to have our elections. We have, I'd like to make motion that we elect Calvin Arnold here as chair of the Board of LRA Commissioners.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. All those in favor?
Hi.
I, we both in favor of that. I'd like to make a motion that we nominate and accept Natalie Vile as our secretary.
Accept. I mean, I, I will second, second.
Okay. It's been motioned in second to elect Natalie Vile as secretary. Those in favor?
So I know, I, no opposed. Motion carries.
And then lastly, I'd like to self nominate myself, Gil Brown, as vice chair of the LRA Board of Commissioners.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Those in favor, so note by saying aye. All right. So congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, I'd like to also, sorry, want to go back a little bit and say that we want to make a change to our agenda. So if we can make a change on our agenda after our minutes, I'd like to make a motion that we move from, do I need to make a motion on that? To change your agenda? Do I need to make a motion?
Just you the chair, actually you the vice chair, or it's the chair. I don't know how you want to run it from here, but that's your priority.
Okay. So I can just go ahead and change without making a motion. Okay. So on part two of your agenda, this is a two-part agenda. The cover June and July, we are moving resolutions, 112, 113, 114, and 115 to the first part of our agenda, and that will be after the minutes are approved. So with that, we'll go on to the report of the commissioners. Do you have any report?
No.
All right, no report. And we have minutes in our packets and minutes from the May 31st meeting. And having reviewed those, I ask that we make a motion to approve those minutes from the May 31st meeting.
Second.
It's moved in second to approve minutes from the May 31st meeting. Those in favor, say aye.
If you want to switch your role.
Okay, okay.
Or previous role.
Okay, sure. Absolutely, previous role.
I'd say aye.
Okay. All right. Next.
Okay. So roll call. Or a roll call.
Roll call, yes, we can do, okay.
Think around.
Yes.
Think around.
Yes.
All right. It's been motion approved. Okay, next on our agenda, as we stated, we have a resolution. Our first resolution is, I'm sorry, 112. And I have to get that. Yeah. Okay. So I guess we start off with 112 minutes. All right. I'd like to make motion that we accept resolution number. Excuse me. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Good morning, commissioners, and members of the board. My name is Lance Knuckles. I have the privilege of being a senior vice president for Neighborhood Development Corporation, as well as the director of real estate, giving the support and partnership to operate the land replacement authority. I'm presenting to the commissioner this morning, resolution number 23, LRA 112. Resolution adopting the five pricing policy for LRA properties. The quick objective summary, the resolution adopts new and updated real estate policies in order to align with the San Luis development economic effect. There's a number of background support that we provide. You will provide a high level overview. As a result of this work, as you all may know, the land realization authority is the oldest land bank in the country, and the pricing policy for LRA has not been revised since 2011. And through our investigation and adjusting and right sizing the operating LRA, this is one of these strategic activities to align our pricing policy with our economic desert action. In addition to that, the pricing policy takes into consideration the 2021 et cetera regulations or assessment of parcels in the city. And so the pricing policy that you see in front of you reflects probably a 90% geographic reduction in pricing across the city, with very few areas where pricing might go up slightly, but those are areas that are not within our economic desert footprint. And so as we think about moving forward, the pricing policy that you have in front of you reflects per unit price reduction going to $1,000 and up to $2,000 or $2,500 in some cases, which is a reduction. And you will also see a significant reduction in the seller of other properties. As we move forward, it is my recommendation to this commission to adopt this pricing policy and keep it available and accessible for residents to use as they look to seek to purchase properties for LRA. And so I've moved that you all receive this recommendation for positive consideration.
Okay. Thank you very much. Resolution number 23, LRA 112, has been presented. I'd like to make the motion that we accept resolution number LRA 112.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Oh, previous role.
Previous role, yeah. And there's no objection.
Yeah, no, no objection. Motion carries. Okay. Next resolution we have is resolution number 113. I'd like to ask the more Charlie to make a presentation on that resolution.
Thank you, ma'am chair. The resolution is an annual resolution that we do. Presents the budget for the fiscal year. SLBC's fiscal year begins July 1 and ends on June 30. So this is covering the period from July 1, 23 through June 30 of 24. The budget is not unlike previous years. We were, it is attached to the resolution and it's a five column report. First two columns show the actual results for FY22. The agenda begins during the 22. And the center two columns show the budget for FY23, which we have projected results for 23. And then the fifth column shows the budget for 24. Biggest item, and I won't take up too much time, but it's the sale of property. The sale of property, we're budgeting the same as we did last year, but last year's results were lower. We're hoping that the budget figure will be attained for FY24. The, as you know, the offers were suspended last year for a certain period of time, maybe four, five, or six months. And it does improve the policy that probably puts our values in line with what they should be based on the sensors data. So we're protecting that 650 again in FY24. If you look at the, and the other revenue and expense are normally what you would expect from real estate activity. I will comment that the largest expense item on property expense and maintenance, 300,000, is corporate contributions to improving the neighborhoods. There is a corresponding grant from CBG to SLBC to for about a million 750, I believe. That's in addition to this, but it's on the SLBC side. And that is probably the biggest item that's off the, off the schedule here, but does relate to LRA. And if you subtract the revenue and the expense from the revenue, you get a net income of projected net income of 365,000. And if you look down below, there's a $300,000 transfer to SLBC for administrative support. That 300,000 has been a long time transfer to cover staff and office expense for the real estate employees working with LRA. It's lower than what it probably costs out to be, but it's basically all LRA can afford. And that is, goes back to when SLBC was formed and absorbed the staffs of LRA and all the other asset holding entities like LCRA, EIDEA, Port Authority. They all had their own separate staffs, which SLBC absorbed under their budget. And there's five-year agreements between SLBC and Prince and LRA to administer the LRA activity. The, those five-year agreements stipulate that annually, a transfer be made that's approved by both entities. SLBC has approved their side, and this is the request for LRA to approve its side. If that transfer is made, we still would reduce our negative fund balance from 595 to 5/3. So we are slowly shifting away at that negative fund balance and would ask for your consideration to approve the budget and the transfer to SLBC.
Charlie, just from my understanding, again, on the grant dollars, if you said that it's in the budget for maintenance and at SLDC, now will we see that at any time? Okay.
Although there's talk about moving that, CDB, CDA has talked about moving that into LRA's a direct relationship with LRA, and that may be coming before you in December.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation. Hearing the presentation, I'd like to make motion that we accept resolution number 23, LRA 113.
One second.
Then motion second, previous role. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next on our agenda, I'd like for Lance Knuckles to provide an overview for resolution number 23, LRA 114.
One second, Commissioner. Back in order here. Again, commissioners, sorry. Again, we have resolution 23, LRA 114. This is the resolution authorizing entering into an agreement for engineering services at 6111 Dr. Barton Luther King Drive. The resolution authorized an agreement with Vestal Corporate for Structural Engineering Services at 6111. Dr. Barton and Drive funds are available under the LRA Commercial Stabilization Service Agreement funded by the state and local recovery. State and local fiscal recovery funds slurred passed through the City of San Luis Community Development Administration. This resolution is the second stage of a resolution we brought back to this commission around the stabilization of LRA properties. Specifically speaking to forest structure, these two I'm presenting to you today are in support of that. This is the Welston Loop Station, which is a historical site, not only for community, but in the cultural context. And so as I presented before, we've made a commitment to stabilize those parcels and go through our proactive or priority redevelopment strategy. And this information or this, this contract is allowing us to do the structural engineering to assess the structural damage to then begin the contracting of a stabilization contractor that will come back to you as well once the stabilization scope of work has been identified. So this resolution is getting your support and authority to take the next step in the process of the stabilization of the Welston Loop Station and moving into a contractual relationship with Vestal Corporation to be able to execute that work.
Prince.
Yes, ma'am.
Once that is completed, will the commission at some point see this property then go on to wanted for sale?
So the process that we're taking, we call it our proactive redevelopment, is the first step is to structurally assess the site. Second would be to then get the site stabilized. We'll then conduct some community engagement around not only the structure, but the surrounding area. And then we'll partner with community to launch an RFP. And then the parcel would be brought into a redevelopment agreement for that parcel to be stabilized, not to be fully redeveloped, I should say.
Okay.
And so that was a long way of saying that there are steps in the process. This is the structural engineering that you will see when we get the stabilization contractors vetted and prepared to move forward. And we'll see the contract with them before we move forward. And then the RFP that will be developed and launched in partnership with community will come to this body for it to actually launch.
Thanks very much.
Yes, ma'am. Good question.
Hearing the presentation, I make the motion that we accept resolution number 23, LRA 114.
Second. Second.
Previous, previous role. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have resolution number 23, LRA 115. I'd like for Senior Vice President Lance to give us an overview of that resolution.
Again, Commissioner, the resolution 23, LRA 115, is a resolution authorized into an agreement with Engineering Services at 6306 West Florissant. This resolution authorized an agreement with David Mason and Associates for Structural Engineering Services at 6301 West Florissant Avenue. Funds are available under the LRA Commercial Stabilization Service Agreement funded with the state and local fiscal recovery funds passed through the City of San Luis Community Development Agents. And again, Commissioner, this is another one of the four priority projects that definitely see it accelerating. And this site itself is the, what we call the historical club Imperial. We've had the bikes of Tina Turner, Reverend Peace, we have performed there. And so this is another resolution we're bringing forward to get the structural engineering begun for that and then complete that same process in the four stages I mentioned in the previous resolution. But I'll answer any questions. And again, this will also come back in front of you at each gates of the process with your support.
Okay, thank you. With that presentation, I make the motion that we accept resolution number 23, LRA 115.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role. Hearing no objection, motion carries. So that concludes our resolution. And before we move on, meaning, so there's no reports to commissioners, but before we move on to offers, I'd like to ask if there, maybe, if there's anyone present that is scheduled to present. Do you have anyone that signed up? Okay. Older woman ties.
Morning. This is the right mic. Hello? No, I can speak loud on that. After 32 years, I know how to speak. I come before you on various different offers before LRA. I've been back here for a long time. I want to acknowledge that Mr. Calvin Arnold, who is a constituent of mine for a long time. Last time that was constituent of mine, Mr. Chair, was my husband Sterling Miller, who was the chair of LRA back under Clarence Harmon. We've been doing a lot of development in the board. We finally got our board all back together. And I'm surprised to see all these different piecemeal offers that will conflict with the development that I'm doing. And so I don't know how you want me to, to address these one at a time or all or whatever. But I actually brought you some proof of things that I've been doing to try to do development. And I'm really, I have a question about asking that you put these, most of these offers on hold for one month so I can show you what we've been doing. Mr. Knuckles knows that for, even before I got my board back, I was demolishing. I started sending him stuff in May of last year before the election, because I knew I was going to win. And I knew what needed to be done to clean up Kingsway East and Kingsway West. Also the March Lane and Pinnos. I've now picked up the deal, the Greater Vale, Vander Venter, Lewis Place, and Bay. I have 12 neighborhoods in the 12th ward. My four neighborhoods that I've been representing for over 30 years, Pinnos, Kingsway East and Kingsway West, in the last 20 years, March Lane. And so when I see all of this piecemeal offers in the middle of what is a very important development that's going to occur, I have to come before you say, we put this on hold. I, I know you don't look for automatic input anymore. I think that's a mistake. Mr. Knuckles knows that when he first came in, the first thing I told him was get rid of some people. He said that to me, and I was exactly.
So for older woman?
I'm not going to say names.
So older woman, I, I want to just, and I'm going to, maybe out of turn, but I want to make sure that if you have specific items that you want to address, that we can move to recommend those. Really, we would love to engage in a deep discussion if you would allow.
Okay, but I just didn't know, I wasn't.
Yes, ma'am.
I was thinking of doing one at a time, so.
No, I think if it, I think that the request of the commissioners to maybe proceed a series of parcels that we want to consider holding over or deferring to next month. I think it's something that this body can really consider.
All right.
As people.
So first I'll say, I'll say what pages and whatever, on page five, line seven, I'm supportive of Robb Place, okay, those two. Or, well, the backup of this year, right?
I'm sorry.
Page, which, hey, you don't want the ones that I support just because.
So, so are you in June or July? There are two agendas.
I'm sorry, page five. And I guess it's July 26.
Oh, yeah. So give us a, what?
Part one or?
Property of.
A part one or part two?
And.
So give me the parcel ID or the address.
The address, I'm sorry.
30, 39 Robb Place and 3025 Robb Place. That's on page five.
That's the sixth.
Nine, seven, or 12. I don't know what they're doing, but I know that they need to be rehandled. Whoever picked the deck, I was dead on that street yesterday. And I'm very supportive of that.
So, so what we might, may need to do, older woman, is.
Just those are the ones that I'm.
If there's, if there's one that you want us to defer.
Okay.
If we can just document them, I don't know, no, no, here, we can do document.
So here, it's easier to say it this way. In Kingsway East and West, I'm asking for you to only go because I have valid developers that are wanting to do a holistic development. Some of these are right behind sweet pies that we're working on, and now everybody wants those properties. And so I actually have already asked for, sent a letter to Jack Zachary Wilson, who, to ask him to do blind deals on those. Okay, so those would be, and I can give you the 100 blocks. Those would be anything in the 4,900 block of Aldine. Anything in the 4,900 block of, I don't think he had anything on Warwick, Palm.
100 block of Palm.
39 block.
49.
4,800 block of Madison. And then there's one on Martin Luther King. Mr. Wilson has asked me to do a complete development plan for Martin Luther King. I was wanting to do it in, in small amounts, but that's right in the middle of what he asked me to do for a development plan. And it is in the, I want to say, let me see, 4,100 block of Martin Luther King. And I could share with you, once we are out of session, what we already have on, you know, from developers. I just don't want to put that before public right now.
Yes, ma'am. And so, so I appreciate that. I want to, I want to clarify something, older woman, that we do respect and still doubt the position of automatic leaders. It has just been identified that the upper down resides with this mission. And so your engagement is thoughtful and important, but we have to have an open dialogue around how we show the property to the partnership.
So I want to tell you, when my husband came to chair, I did legal research, so I know that. That has always been my argument when the press says all the automation control LRA, no, they don't. The three commissioners, in fact, at LBC, I already know that. I'm just coming for my own recommendations, because what happens is LRA sells my property. And then the people think, they come to me and say, I need tax payment, I need that. And I said, no, I didn't support that. So that's why it's important that you have automatic input, because people, we got a problem on 4,800 block of Anderson that was created by LRA not listening. Okay, so I don't come often saying what's going on, but I'm here now because we do have development plans. That's what you're supposed to be a branch of. That's why you were created, so you could hold property that we can holistically develop. I've been doing development at Kingsway East and West for 32 years, and I've built $57 million of stuff, so I have experience. So I'm not asking for this lightly. I'm just asking for me to be able to commit to you what we've been doing. And I've only, we, we gained that property through the last couple of months.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so very much. I appreciate your being here.
Right. Congratulations, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, the older woman ties. Ties. Thank you. Okay. Do we have anyone else?
Yeah, we have. On part two.
Okay. Okay, part two, number seven. Okay. All right, so this is number seven on page 25. This.
I think it's number eight.
Oh, eight, okay.
Number eight.
Okay, Melinda, hey, how are you?
Resident Audio Palace, meaning longtime resident.
Um, resident of O'Fallon County, long time resident. But at the same time, I am one of the many volunteers that are on the board of the O'Fallon Community Organization. The O'Fallon organization originally, was originally established in nineteen seventy-five. And we continue to be active as far as any type of social, sort of social, uh, notices, noticing, notices to people in the community. Within the last year, their foundation or innovation has decided to re, uh, reorganize, recalibrate this initiative. Because of the fact that we, we do value our properties over here, and at the same time, we are supportive of development. So with that, we had amended our mission to do more of the double. On this, we do see a big cluster of properties on this list that are found in this requesting the option to purchase. Because of the fact, um, this is in West Florence and in the morning avenue. The O'Fallon organization had introduced to the, to the community back in late last year in early June, introduced it in February, to the residents in the O'Fallon community to care a West Florence business district. And that, that, um, is in front of West Florence and hope on the west. And this short area ends at West Florence and the morning on the east. Majority of the properties that are listed on here are yes, L R A properties. And at the same time, many of the, many of the properties are lots, L O T lots, big ones. So with that, if you look at, I mean, these properties on a map, it would look like a two-tiered letter T. Because we're going, we're going to West Florence and going east to the west. So with that, we also, we're very happy now that Neil Jones has in fact allocated an X amount, double digit millions of dollars for you to afford. We have personally put our, our paperwork together to submit to S L D C for the North Florida. But of course, we need to have the properties in the land to do that. But with that, we're asking with the board to consider putting the option of purchase on these lands for, for the lots for sure, new construction. Majority of this areas will be commercial. And I did in fact, uh, speak to, you, when you look at the map, there are several lots that are right next to each other. I asked you to, to look into, uh, imagine a big new commercial building there with multiple business entrances in. So it won't be like each lot may not be separate individual buildings. Now with that, at the same time, there are some residents, there are some residential buildings, a few residential buildings, all of them renovated and will stay residential. But the majority of the lots that are there will be for new construction and for, yes, for new development. Yes, yes. I believe I covered everything.
Okay. Uh. Ms. Long, yes, I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Uh. In the information that shared, um, do you have a master developer or will O'Fallon Community Development Organization be the master developer for the project?
We are, and that is an interesting question. We are still conversing with, um, the gentleman with S L D C. We have converged with the big developer. Yes, we are in the process of seeking a big developer to handle the majority of the construction. But, uh, with that, at the same time, we, we are hope, we want this developer to, we're sitting, we would like this developer to work with us and on our ideas for the community. So I'm not really sure if I can answer that question in full detail yet.
Okay.
Because, because, um, we don't exactly know, we're not, we have no interest in passing the reign over to a developer. But at the same time, we definitely want to be a big, a big influence on what comes next.
So other than the S L D C grant that you speak of, uh, are there other sources of funds that you're going to be seeking or that you have sought?
Yes ma'am. We do. We understand the process of applying for grants and facilities of development will come from the organization itself. We have personally put our information together, our package together. And we do understand that, uh, base look at the credibility of the organization. And, uh, so with that, um, with that, we do, we will look for private development as well as putting our own funds into the.
Alright, thank you very much. So any questions? Have you have any questions over?
So, Commissioner, I just wanna offer, so as long as you're right. As always, uh, I just wanna be really clear that as if the commission passes this, there will be an option B. Definitely needs to be paid within a short span of time. And so I wanna make sure that the organization prepares to pay that option to be. But it won't be held pending a grant agreement, because I know right now those grants won't be due until later this year. So I just wanted to, just want you all to be aware.
Yes, so we do understand that. We have to, what, we have to pay that option B. Yes, we are aware of that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. No more questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
On the agenda, part one, we have number one.
What number the?
Number one on part one.
Okay.
Okay, here's the bottom, if you have any questions, okay, I'll put your.
Okay, so, uh, okay. Is this for forty-one sixty Delmar?
Yes.
Anyone here to speak on behalf of forty-one sixty Delmar?
No. Okay, um, what do we want?
Okay.
Um, so we're on, on. Part one. Item number. Two. Five dated.
Good morning all, my entire neighbors. I don't have any comment, but I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. And that's forty-five sixty? Okay, Redwood Avenue, number two. Thank you. Any additional presenters?
We have, uh, this. Uh, item number nine.
Part one.
And that's, okay, sometimes. I have a number eight.
Okay, so we're part two, number eight? Okay, number nine. Okay, Ms. Rob? Okay.
You think I have like forty-one fifty-two and forty-one fifty-four, fifty-two.
Okay, thank you.
What I wanted to do is write me, I did it to my, I did it to my, uh, who I'm trying to buy. So I think everyone, nobody could really, uh, for they would, we all for they would, uh, uh, door. And, uh, because I guess we've been cutting it live. You know, one was cut, and so I heard, you know, that's the one that did it too, to help the people. We are reading, we're cutting it live. They've been dumping it alive. And so, so I did it, put a fence around it, and so that you're, that we're going to church and.
Okay. Um, have you spoken with anyone from, uh, the community regarding putting that information?
Pastor, and, uh, he, uh, gave me these, uh, uh, ideals of the ones that I might have put up for these. And he said that he would work with me and do the work and he's gonna get a little bit of, and and, uh, the sand from the north, that just church, uh, sand.
Okay, anyone else in the community other than the church? Any input from anyone else other than?
Just, uh, uh, leaning pastor.
Okay. Okay. Uh, do we have a picture of that forty-one fifty-four? No, I'm sorry. I just wanted to see that.
I have several.
I'll send the, yeah, uh, made difference to that, so, well, not it, well.
Okay, and so is your property next to the church?
Right next, my property right next to forty-one fifty-two and forty-one fifty-four. It was like, uh, they made like, it was two houses together and they tore it down. And it is right next door, right next to my, my house. Because our house is almost like the only house on the block. All the other houses is vacant and, and that's why I was having a problem with this lot. People was dumping and no one was seeing, no one was coming out, cutting the grass or anything. We had to keep the grass cut, so that's why I said I would get the lot, put a fence around it, use it for my church family and for my fam. We can enjoy it for the, for one. My pastor said he would put the pavilion up for me and everything, you know, that's why I wanted to, I had to down, I saw the, the lot. So that would really do.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation. Alright, uh, next on our agenda, I'll go back to number one. On part, okay.
Return to part A, return to part one, uh, at a number one, address forty-one sixty Delmar. Um, there was some confusion with regard to my, uh, initially there was a higher, um, value estimate label to that address by the R A. Um, I will now support the, um, estimate of value by the R A of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-four. And would like to adjust to the vision forty-two that, um, determine value by the R A.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, thank you. Uh, you had some on our agenda. Do we have anyone else on our agenda?
I wish you, and, uh, also, um, the lady that was speaking on that, um, forty-one fifty-two, fifty-four National Bridge. And she pitched up that application again as well. I don't see that at all back. She said she did it now.
For what?
For that property of forty-one fifty-two and fifty-four National Bridge.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. Yeah, it's on the agenda. Right.
So now I'm just going to. On part two, number seven. The residence that would like to be not personal, three seven, and we're.
I'm sorry, is this Livingston?
No, she, but the latest resident that's being, cannot be.
Okay.
Yes. Good morning. My name is LaRara Kelly, and I live at the twenty-seven oh six Rutherford. It's right next door to the park. I have been asking.
I'm sorry, I have to make sure I'm on the right page. Are we talking about part two or part one? Okay, and that's number seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, I see it. Thank you. I'm on the same page.
It's a vacant lot, and it's right next door to my home. It's twenty-seven oh six Rutherford. I have been asking L R A, L R A to sell the entire lot to me. A while back, I guess maybe about five years ago, they sold me twenty feet of the, the lot. So I added twenty feet, and I've been asking for the rest of the lot. I find out that the lot is up for sale. And developers are coming into my neighborhood. They're buying up all of the lots. They told me that I couldn't have the whole lot. So now I'm noticing developers are purchasing lots in my neighborhood and building on these lots. So I have eight new homes on my street that was once lots. And so what I'm asking is, please do not sell that lot to a developer to just come in and purchase and build alongside my home. Please sell the lot to me. I am an independent contractor, and I take care of people that have special needs. And I want the lot to add onto my home to make a better life for the people who I support in my home. That's my answer today.
Excuse me, your name?
It's LaRara Kelly.
And have you submitted an application for the lot?
I was going to submit an application. One of my friends, um, called me and told me that they are selling the lots pretty reasonable, and people are buying up the lots. So when I made the call, um, to purchase the lot, I realized what they told me that the lot was going to be sold. And if I had an opportunity to come today, to come in today and ask, is there any way that I should, can I have someone to use all of the lot and not sell it to the developers? So that I can purchase the lot? So that's why I'm here. So that's why I'm here today to see if there's any way that I can purchase the lot. If it is, if it's right next to the.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Do we have any other presenters?
I'm going to thirty-eight, part two.
Thirty, under miscellaneous.
I'm Debra Muhammad and I'm here at about nineteen oh nine East Brandon. So you guys, LRA has originally agreed to sell their property and then on present and financing. But since the original offer, there has been significant damage to the roof. So I was asked then, I still want to do the same thing I want to do with the property. Which is the store to CNA school. But I wanted you guys to consider demolition of the property and rebuilding there with the same purpose. For the school. Because it may be cost effective to just demo it and rebuild versus doing the repair. There's significant damage to the property. And I guess this by accident, you know, the roof go out of the. Question for me?
Okay.
And I submitted an offer to amends with the detail.
Okay.
And budget and finance.
Okay. And you presented the information regarding the demo? Would you be demoing?
Yeah, well, I have it in the budget amount.
Budget amounts, okay.
And, you know, really just comparing the pricing, you know, I just want to have that option to them.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other presentations that I have for your agenda? You are on this month's seventy-nine year.
Okay.
I have that question here.
Thank you. Okay, if there, would you like to present? Thank you.
That includes the sign that I have.
Okay, and no, there is no one online. And we've heard everyone in the room will proceed with our agenda. So first up, we'll start off with our offers to purchase.
Offers to purchase. The parcel owned by LRA that consists of unoccupied grounds of physical structures. Single-family residents, side lots, two FF, four FF, et cetera. The offers have submitted offers purchased with the intentions of rehabbing properties as residential or commercial projects. An extension of their yard space, community gardens, green spaces to enhance the beauty of the community.
The first section that we have in front of us. Will review the new construction program. And the new construction program, they are class A lots. They have a minimum of four thousand square feet in total land with no more than three contiguous lots per offer. So the first property that we have in this category, number one, is forty-one sixty Delmar Boulevard, forty-one forty-two Delmar Boulevard, and forty-one forty-six Delmar Boulevard. I make motion that we accept the offer as presented here. And I'd like to have a second.
Second.
Motion and second, can I ask for a call? Call please.
Peter Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next.
Next we have as in rehab programs or class A residential buildings up to six units. No more than one building with no more than two contiguous lots and commercial building.
Number two, under the as is rehab program. We have property address forty-five sixty Red Bud Avenue. I make the motion that we counter offer, the offer for two thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
Okay, previous role, hearing no objection. Motion carries. Next, we have number three, thirty-five hundred Grant, North Grand Avenue. And I'd like to make the motion that we counter the offer for eleven thousand five hundred as a twenty-four month option with closing contingent upon paying outstanding taxes on forty-six thirty-three Alaska and approval of budget and financing.
Second.
I'd like to call previous role, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have ninety, I'm sorry, ninety-twenty Harlan Avenue. I'd like to make the motion that we accept the offer.
Second.
Previous role. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, item number five, we have thirty, I'm sorry, sixty thirteen Emma Avenue and sixty thirty-three Emma Avenue. And I'd like to make the motion that we defer this offer pending hearing from the community there, from their, from the community regarding input from and support prior to the commission making a decision.
Second.
Previous role. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have fifty-four oh five Clover Avenue. And I make the motion that we accept the offer with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
Previous role, with no objection, motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have Tarex Construction Group. And we have the items listed below. We have twelve eighty-four Goodfellow and the additional properties that are below. With that, I make the motion that we counter this offer for five thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars with closing being contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
Previous role, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next. Section.
We have development programs or offers for parcels owned by LRA that consist of physical structures, single-family residents, side lots, two FF, four FF, et cetera. For the rehab and or construction of any combination of followers. Rehab and or construction of mixed and used buildings. Rehab and or constructions of multiple residential buildings. Rehab and residential buildings with more than six units and or commercial projects.
We have, first in this category, we have item number eight. At twenty-six twenty Dr. Martin Luther King, presented by Dream Enterprises LLC. I'd like to make the motion that we counter this offer for two thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Previous role, hearing no objection, motion carries.
Next we have general lot purchase program. Provide guidelines for the sales of LRA properties, lots, class A for any purpose other than the construction, buildings, rehab, and development.
Okay. I've just received some additional information regarding item number eight. In your packet, that would be property address twenty-six twenty Dr. Martin Luther King. I'd like to withdraw the initial motion that we made and ask that we revise that motion and issue another motion to counter the offer and counter it at three thousand six hundred and sixty-six with a thirty-six month option with closing being contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I ask for previous role, hearing no objection, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to, moving on to section D. As presented, we have item number nine, sixty-one nineteen Pennsylvania. I motion that we reject the offer due to disposition of existing property. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, previous role, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number ten, you have those items listed in exhibit A, presented by Benham. Benham, Theodoros Baraki, sorry about that, Baraki Construction. And I'd like to make the motion that we defer the acceptance or defer any action on this parcel pending community input.
Second.
Alright, it's been motioned in second. Previous role, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have forty-one forty-nine Dr. Martin Luther King. I make the motion that we defer this action pending community support.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next on our agenda, number twelve forty-nine twenty-two Aldine Avenue. Keys Realty Group, Inc. And I make the motion that we reject due to disposition of existing city-owned property.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Previous role, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, number thirteen, forty-four sixty-six West Bell Place. I motion to counter the offer for two thousand and fifty-one dollars with closing contingent upon approval of fencing, paving, and landscaping plants.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number fourteen, those property addresses, dresses are listed in exhibit A. Presented from Gorilla Angel Group LLC, Rodney Brown. I motion that we reject the offer based on disposition of existing city-owned properties. That's second.
Second.
It's a motion in second, previous role, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next, we have item number fifteen, forty-eight sixteen Mappin' and forty-eight ten Mappin'. I make the motion that we defer any decision on this pending community input.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role, as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number sixteen, we have twenty-five oh five Belle Glade Place, forty-one forty-one Saint Ferdinand Avenue. I motion that we defer any decision on these two parcels pending community input.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have thirty-nine eighteen North Grand. Okay. I'd like to make the motion that we counter the offer for one thousand one hundred and eighty dollars with a twelve-month option with closing being contingent upon approval of fencing, paving, and landscaping plans and the closing of thirty-five fifteen Barrett.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have item number eighteen. These items, our property addresses are listed in exhibit A. I make the motion that we reject the purchase due to disposition of existing city-owned properties.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have item number nineteen twenty-one twenty-six East Morning. I make the motion that we counter the offer for one thousand seven hundred and forty-three dollars with closing contingent upon approval of fencing, paving, and landscaping plans.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. It's been motioned in second, using previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have forty-eight fifty-four Lee Avenue, presented by Shemel Taylor, I make the motion that we counter offer for four thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-six cents with closing contingent upon approval of landscaping, paving, and fencing plans.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we, we don't have any sidelines.
Okay.
Next, we don't have any sidelines, program, and our next.
Option renewal. Offer is requested by additional time to complete projects due to the construction's delays, funding, et cetera. An option that are near expiration, offers must display proof of consistent progress and receive renewal of options and extensions on time.
Our first properties under this category are, for number twenty-one, they're listed as exhibit A. The offer has been made by, for option renewal, a second request from residency for humanity, property to LLC. I make the motion that we accept the second renewal request for thirty thousand dollars as a twelve-month option with closing being contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, using previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have item number twenty-two, presented by FSC Consulting, forty-eight Field Place Development LP. It is the second renewal request, I make the motion that we accept the second renewal request in amount of eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for a twelve-month option with closing being contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, using previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have item number twenty-three fifty-six oh three Cates and fifty-six nineteen Cates by the same entity, FSC Consulting and Development and Village of Delmar to LP. This is the third request, I make the motion that we accept the option, third option request of seventeen thousand three hundred and eighty dollars for the twelve-month option with closing being contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, using previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries.
Now we have Prop NS stabilization, stabilization buildings. The Prop NS program is a strategic initiative with the goal of stabilizing vacant residential buildings owned by the City of St. Louis Land Reutilization Authority, LRA, which offers them for sale. The program will establish, was established by the community, initiative, and voter-approved ordinance and created a dedicated source of funding to make the possibility for LRA to improve properties within the city landmark of the vacant buildings. This investment is intended to increase the likelihood that these properties will be purchased and by private properties, I mean parties, which will then finish their rehab and transform current deteriorating building into decent housing for their community.
Item number twenty-four, the first in this category, we have fifty-four fifty-nine Genevee. We have an offer presented by Willie Carter, Willie Chris Carter. And I make the motion that we accept offer contingent upon closing being contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries.
Now we have donations, donations are partials which consist of unoccupied grounds or structures owned by constituents, constituents which desire to donate due to no longer wanting their properties or they are incapable of maintaining the upkeep. The donation is entered, entered the LRA inventory and sold using the LRA process.
This first one, we'll see twice, we'll see it in the month of June, which we're covering now, and we'll see it in July. On item number twenty-five sixty-one fifty-one North Point Boulevard, I make the motion that we defer this to the part two of our group. So we'll defer this to July.
Second.
Okay. Then, motion and previous role is vote, hearing, no objection, motion carries. Next, item number twenty-six, eight forty-three McLaren, I motion that we accept the offer of donation.
Second.
The motion is second, hearing, using previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries.
Now we have miscellaneous items are requested changes from the original approved board decisions. These are include of changes of end use, name change, et cetera. The request must go before the board for consideration.
First, we have a change of end use for item number twenty-seven, address forty-two forty-five Mark Market Street. I make the motion that we accept offer to, for the change of use.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Last, we have, on part one, we have item number twenty-eight. And those properties are listed in exhibit A, and they are being presented by New Earth Form LLC. We make the motion to accept offer with closing being contingent upon plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
Using previous role, using previous role as the vote, and hearing no objection, motion carries. We do have one more on part one, and that is item number twenty-nine. That is, you see those properties listed in exhibit A from TNT Auto Center LLC. We are, I'd like to make the motion to reject this offer due to inability to expand business into area due to existing special use district. Do I have second?
Second.
It's been motioned in second, using previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. And before we go into part two, if we could take a three-minute break before we go into part two. I'm sorry, are you ready? All right, we are going to continue on with our agenda, moving to part two. That would be for property submitted for July, we just completed June, and now we are doing July. So we have already done the resolution, so we'll start off reviewing the offers. So as we have already covered what the offers to purchase are in new construction, and I'll move right into our rehab program. We have no new construction, so we'll move on, item number one. Parcel number one is thirty-six thirty-three Winnebago Street, presented by Burrito Brothers LLC. I'd like to make the motion to accept offer contingent upon closing, being contingent upon budget and financing and sealed drawings. So make the motion to accept offer with closing being contingent upon approval of budget, financing, and sealed drawings.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Benjamin Brown.
Yes.
Benjamin Arnold.
Yes.
It's all parties accept, motion carries with no objection. Item number two, forty-seven twenty-one East Sacramento, presented by Pamper Me LLC. I motion to accept the offer with closing being contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Motion, second.
It's been moved and seconded, using previous role as the vote. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have fifty-five eleven Partridge, presented by Craig Arnold. I make the motion to defer this decision pending community input.
Second.
It's been motioned in second, hearing, using previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number four, your properties are listed in exhibit A. We have an offer presented by Mark Bogan. I motion to counter offer for four thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have twenty-seven twenty-four Bird Avenue, presented by Sheldon O. Dorsey. I'd like to make the motion to accept offer with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Next category, as we have presented before, under development, we have item number six. And we have an item here, you see the parcels listed below. And we have an offer presented by Shante Wadley. I'd like to motion to counter the offer at four thousand five hundred with closing being contingent upon receipt of plans, budget and financing.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry, I want to go back to this one because it looks like we did receive. The counter offer was forty-five and we have accepted that. So I'd like to revise that motion. I motion to accept the offer with closing being contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing.
Second.
The motion is seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have properties listed at below here, Exhibit A on Tenonson Rucker. We have an offer presented by Limson Manga. And I would ask that we defer this offer pending additional community input prior to making a decision on this.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have the properties that are listed in Exhibit A for O'Fallon Community Development Organization. Based on information that's been presented, I ask that we defer this decision prior to making decision and await additional information regarding support as well as additional financing and funding and development for projects.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as votes. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, having heard in the previous section, we are now going over the general lot purchases. First, we have item number nine, forty-one fifty-two Natural Bridge and forty-one fifty-four East Natural Bridge, presented by Janice and Gary Ruff. Make the motion that we defer the acceptance of this offer pending community input prior to making a decision.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item ten and forty-four four-six Pinroads. Make motion to counter offer for two thousand twenty-two dollars as a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon receipt of fencing, paving and landscaping plans.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have forty thirty-four West Florissant, offer presented by Karen Greer. Make the motion to reject offer due to disposition of existing city-owned properties.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have nine seventeen Canaan Avenue. Make the motion to defer offer pending community input prior to a decision.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded, hearing no objections, using previous role, motion carries. Next, we have fifty-three fifty-six Ridge Avenue and fifty-three fifty-eight Ridge Avenue. I'm motion to counter offer for seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars with closing being contingent upon approval of fencing, paving and landscaping plans.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number fourteen, seventy-one eleven Michigan Avenue, presented by the Spanish Society. I motion to counter offer for six thousand two hundred and seven dollars with closing contingent upon plans, budget and financing.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number fifteen, fifty-eight eighty-two Julian, presented by Marcel Perry-Rone. I made motion to defer any action regarding this parcel pending community input.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we'll use previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have item number sixteen, fifty-eight seventeen Cabbany Avenue, fifty-eight twenty-three Cabbany Avenue, presented by Fenech Ken Apartment Homes. Make the motion to defer any action on these, these two parcels until our next meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, hearing using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number seventeen, forty-seven fifty-five Beacon Avenue. I motion to accept this offer and forward the offer to the appointee authority.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number eighteen, we have eleven sixty-three Albert from WCAL Investments LLC. I make the motion to defer action on making decision on offer pending community input.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number nineteen, we have parcels fifty-six thirty-seven Vernon Avenue and fifty-six forty-three Vernon Avenue, presented by Alma Brown. And I make the motion that we defer this offer pending community input by West Inn prior to any community, any commission decision.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have the side lot program as previously identified as parcels less than four thousand square feet adjacent to existing properties. The first one we have is item number twenty. We have twelve oh eight Reverend G. H. Pruitt Place. Make the motion to accept offer from Sandra Harris.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number twenty-one fifty-four twenty-nine Geraldine Avenue. I move to accept offer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item twenty-two seventy twenty-one Southwest Avenue, presented by Mary Alice and Ronald Gettaker. I move to accept offer.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objections, motion carries. Next, we, as previously explained by our chair, under auction renewals, we have item number twenty-three, twenty-seventeen Lynton Avenue, presented by Mentors in motion. This is the second renewal request. I motioned that we accept the renewal, the second renewal request in the amount of fifty thousand dollars as a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item twenty-four, the properties are listed in Exhibit A. We have a third auction renewal request from SHR Builders LLC. I make the motion that we accept third auction renewal request in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and one dollars as a twelve-month option with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, as previously explained, we have prop in S stabilized buildings. First, in this category, we have a double offer for twenty-eight twenty-three through twenty-five Gas Gade. We have item one or B or A, Alexander Borns and Ma- Ma- Mush, I'm sorry, Mushma, as well as Havree Haven Recovery Homes LLC. I made motion that we reject the initial offer from Alexander Borns and Ma- Mushma and accept Haven Recovery Homes LLC's offer with the acceptance being contingent upon approval of, I'm sorry, with closing being contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote, hearing no objection. Motion carries. Next, we have item twenty-six forty-six sixty-four Laverty, presented by Danielle Daniels. I motion to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial resources to support rehab.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion, motion carries. Next, we have four offers for forty-two thirty-nine Lee Avenue. We have three J Luxury Suites. I'm, I'll take these separately. I motion that we reject offer from Three J Luxury Suites LLC due to disposition of existing city-owned properties.
Second.
Been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote. Motion, hearing no objection, motion carries.
Second.
I'm sorry. Second, we have an offer from James Robinson for the same property, forty-two thirty-nine Lee. I make the motion that we reject the offer due to disposition of existing city-owned property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as the vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Third offer on forty-two thirty-nine Lee Avenue, we have from Doris House. I motion to reject offer due to disposition of existing city-owned properties.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Lastly, in this category or on this address, we have Teresa Young for forty-two thirty-nine Lee. I make the motion to reject offer due to disposition or sorry, reject offer due to insufficient financial resources for rehab.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, item we have is forty-seven fifteen Newberry. Item number twenty-eight. We have two offers in this, for this address. Offer one is from Sweet Abode LLC. I make the motion that we accept offer from Sweet Abode LLC with acceptance being With acceptance being contingent upon receipt of. Budget and financing plans prior to closing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, of course, we have accepted. Already from item A, so I move that we reject in favor of. Offer A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Using previous role as a vote, I, motion, hearing no objections. Motion carries. Next, we have. Item number twenty-nine, property address is thirty-seven thirty-seven Oregon. We have two offers, A and B. The first offer. We have from Terrence Andre White. And I like to make the motion that we reject this offer. Failure to show local management of development.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection. Motion carries. Second, for thirty-seven thirty-seven Oregon, we have Haven Recovery Homes. I make the motion that we reject the offer due to the acceptance of another. Property that's located at twenty-eight twenty-three Gasconade.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role. As, as a vote here. And hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have item number thirty thirty-seven thirty-seven Oregon. And we have two in that category. Terrence Andre White first. And my motion there is to reject offer due to disposition of existing property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Second, we have. A offer presented on the same property from Haven Recovery Home. And we, I'd like to motion that we reject due to acceptance of another. Property that's located at twenty-eight twenty-three Gasconade.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number thirty-one, we have an offer, multiple offers. For thirty-one from James Robinson and Doris House. Do these together, I make the motion that we reject both A and B. Due to disposition of existing city-owned property.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, on thirty-two. We have multiple offers, A, B and C. A from first for forty-seven thirty-one through thirty-three Newberry Terrace. A from Value First Contractors. B from Frederick and Jamal Montgomery. And B from Marjorie. This, Benque. I made motion that we accept. Offer B from Fred- Frederick and Jamal Montgomery. And reject. Offers A and C in lieu of acceptance of. Option B from Frederick and Jamal Montgomery for forty-seven thirty-one thirty-three. Newberry Terrace.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have. Item number thirty-three fifty-eight fourteen Page Avenue. Presented by Tanya Garrett. Make the motion that we reject offer due to acceptance of another offer. Located at fifty-nine twenty.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number thirty-four. And this is the property that we just referred to fifty-nine twenty through twenty-two. Clement presented by Tanya Garrett. We, I like to motion that we accept this offer. With closing being contingent upon approval of budget and finance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote. And hearing no objection, motion carries. Next category, as previously presented by our chair, under donations. The first property we have in this category, item number thirty-five. Is forty-four forty-six Bessie. And on this one, I'd like to make the motion to defer. In the housing committee decision.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as both and hearing no objection, motion carries. Number thirty-six eight forty-three McLauren, I move to accept the offer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous roles to vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. This was referred to in, item number thirty-seven was referred to in part one where it was deferred to this month. Agenda, so item thirty-seven sixty-one fifty-one North Point Boulevard. Presented by Botanical Avenue LLC, I move to accept.
Second.
Been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote and. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, we have under miscellaneous as previously presented by our chair. We have one item which is a change of end-use item as also was presented. Today, we have nineteen oh nine East Brand. I move that we accept the offer. With closing being contingent approval of plans, budget and finance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded using previous role as a vote and hearing no objection, motion carries. Okay, I believe that concludes our offers. Okay, hold on a second, excuse me one second. Okay, yes. I don't, sorry. I don't too. I don't too, okay. Okay, so yeah, you've been. Yeah, you're fine then, if you accept our counter, then that's fine. So you've got it, so as long as you've accepted, you can talk to the office and you're good. Okay. It's item number. Yeah, same result, item number two. Accept the offer. Okay, all right. Since we have one question, your other question before we adjourn. All right, hearing no questions, I call for this meeting to be adjourned. Thank you everyone for your time and attention on this matter.